All right, I now call to order the Thursday, July 24th, meeting of the Sugar Land Planning and Zoning Commission. Welcome to everyone who's here this evening. Item two, or item three, actually, I will open the floor for public comment. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No, Chair, not at this time.
Okay, with that, I will close the public comment period and wait for our distinguished Chair to take his seat and hand over the gavel. Give us just a second.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. We will move on to item four A, consideration of an action on the minutes of the July 8, 2025 meeting. Those are in your packets. Any comments to the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion to approve by Vice Chairman Lundin, a second from Commissioner Brown. Any further comments? Please vote.
I'll buy some time for you. Yeah, click on.
Yeah. Now will I see the vote for the minutes? There we go.
Just run again.
That passes six zero. Thanks, everyone, and thanks for your patience. We'll move on to item five A, consideration of an action on the final plat for Ryhale Section 2B. Hi, Jessica, how are you?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Good. What do you got?
All right, I have two final plats. The Ryhale Development on the agenda this evening. Just an overview of the Ryhale Development. The city entered into a development agreement with Polte Homes on December 5th of 2023. The Ryhale Development is a proposed approximately 960-acre master plan mixed-use community in the city's ETJ, south of Greatwood. It'll include a mix of approximately 2,335 single-family residential and del web residential lots, the del web being restricted to 55 and up. Within the development agreement, there were minimum lot lists for the single-family and del web residential lots. And in addition to the residential, there is also proposed to be 60 acres of flex or commercial uses north of FM 2759 within the development. So this is a map that you guys are familiar with, of all the Ryhale Plats that have been under consideration. The ones shown in blue are the approved preliminary plats. The ones in red were the final plats under consideration at the last meeting that have now been recorded. The ones in green are the two final plats that are under consideration tonight, the first one being Section 2B and the second one being Section 3. For 2B, an overview of this final plat is that the preliminary plat was approved with conditions at the February 11th meeting. This section includes 30.03 acres of single-family residential. It includes 107 lots, six reserves, three blocks. And the residential lots range from 45, 50, and 60 foot in width, with those corner lots being an additional 10 feet in width. This section is located south of FM 2759 and east of FM 762. And access to this section will be provided through Ryhale Section 2A via Happiness Pass, and Ryhale Section 2A was recorded last month. So here is the Ryhale General Plan, and an excerpt of where this section is located, with the lighter yellow signifying that this is the single-family residential, and it's located north of Ryhale Parkway. So this is the preliminary plat that was conditionally approved at that February meeting. There were quite a few conditions on this, mainly being that there were some dimensions that were off by about .01. That has all been adjusted. Some of those dimensions were called out specifically to change from a certain number to another number. I do want to address that. On the plat, some of those numbers have remained the same, but it's due to other dimensions on the line or curve being adjusted so that they all equal, so that does satisfy the condition. There was another condition that was placed on it with the match lines. The lots were not adding up along this match line. So this is Sheet 1, and this was Sheet 2. This has been corrected, and you'll see on the final plat that the match lines have been adjusted to show a grayed-out portion so that you can verify that they now match up. So this is the proposed final plat. With final plots, you will see the addition of proposed easements. With a preliminary plat, you don't see proposed easements, you only see existing. So you'll see that. You'll see that all of the dimensions should be shown to the hundredth decimal. You'll see, trying to think what else is in addition. So you have all the right-of-way. All that is shown on the final plat. So you'll see that here. And just as a reminder, since 2019, the commission has three options when reviewing preliminary and final plats. The commission can approve, approve with conditions, or disapprove with an explanation. With the approval of conditions and the disapproval and explanation, must cite code reasons. A guide has been provided in the agenda package should you choose to do either of those. And with that, staff is recommending approval of the proposed Ryhale Section 2B final plat. And available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jessica. Questions for staff? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second from Vice Chairman Lundin. Any additional discussion? Please vote. That passes six zero. Thank you very much, Commissioners. Thank you, Jessica, and thank you for making all the changes reflecting the conditions that the commission put on the preliminary plat. Made it very easy, as you see. 5B, consideration of an action on the final plat for Ryhale Section 3. Hello, Jessica.
Hello again. See me three times tonight. Okay, so this one is for Ryhale Section 3. The preliminary plat for this section was approved with conditions as well. This was at the February 27th meeting. This section includes 46.54 acres of single-family residential. It includes 115 lots, eight reserves, and four blocks. The lots within this section range from 40 to 45 feet in width, again with those corner lots being an additional 10 feet in width. This section is adjacent to Section 2B, so it's also located south of FM 2759 and east of FM 762. And access to this section will be provided directly via Ryhale Parkway, as well as access through Ryhale Section 2B. So here is an excerpt of this section from the general plan. As you can see, there are two detention ponds located within it, as well as an amenity center that are shown up as reserves. So this is the conditionally approved preliminary plat. This one, again, had a lot of conditions that were mainly in regards to the dimensions being off by about .01. So all those dimensions that were called out in the conditions have been corrected. Again, some of them aren't necessarily the dimension that was called out for the correction, but they have been corrected, whether it's from the dimension that was called out, or from the dimensions on the line or curve being adjusted to ensure that they total. Here's the second sheet of the preliminary plat, and then here is the proposed final plat. Sheet 2 of it. And so with that, staff is recommending approval of the proposed Ryhale Section 3 final plat.
Thank you. Questions for staff? All right, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a second from Commissioner Delwood. Any other discussion? Please vote. That passes six zero. Thank you very much, everyone. We will move on to item six. Item six, we will be discussing the conditional use permit for the expansion of an existing private school, elementary, middle, and high, at 1201 Lakeview Drive and 1257th Street, further described as a subdivision of 21.52 acres, located in the Brown and Belknap League A15, City of Sugar Land, Fort Bend County, Texas. We will receive a staff report, and then I will open the public hearing, and then we will move on to review and discussion. No consideration in action tonight. Oh, hello. How are you, Jessica?
I'm doing great.
Take it away, please. Oh, and I don't know if the record needs to note that Commissioner Brown is not participating in this part of the meeting. Please proceed.
Okay. All right, so this is the second conditional use permit of this year. So just to provide a little bit of background, the purpose of a conditional use permit is that it provides the opportunity to review detailed plans for proposed development to determine whether the use is appropriate for the site. The commission will consider potential impacts on adjacent properties in the community, including traffic, noise, and then the compatibility and land use intensity. The commission may recommend, and then the council can impose reasonable conditions and restrictions in the granting of a CUP in order to mitigate any adverse impacts of the proposed use. So the CUP application tonight is for Fort Bend Christian Academy. It is an existing private school located south of 7th Street, north of Lakeview Drive, west of Gillingham Lane, and east of Eldridge Road. The site is approximately 21.52 acres. As you can see in the aerial, that's separated into two parts of the campus. There's the north campus, which houses the upper school, and then there is the south campus, which houses the lower middle school. The property zoning designation is Business Office District, or BO. Immediately adjacent properties are also zoned BO, and then across Gillingham is going to be zoned M1, which is Champs-Bougie or SLB's campus. Again, this request is for the expansion of an existing private school, not the establishment. The proposed CUP is for the construction of a one-story, approximately 11,000-square-foot addition to the existing lower school located at 1201 Lakeview Drive, also known as the south campus. A CUP was previously granted in 2001 for the construction of the existing lower school. The current lower middle school enrollment is 508 students, and the proposed addition would increase that capacity of that lower school to 570 students. Access to the lower school's parking lot is provided via a curb cut along Lakeview Drive to the south. Surrounding property, again, is zoned Business Office District and restricted industrial uses. Within that Business Office District immediately adjacent to this site include a couple of churches, a few assisted living facilities, a Fort Bend County library, and then a City of Sugar Land water plant. Looking to the land use plan for guidance, specifically the future land use map, this property is categorized as neighborhood, commercial, and services, which identifies this category for conventional car-oriented retail and services or other low-impact commercial uses that serve local neighborhoods. Buildings in this category are identified to be typically low to mid-rise, low being one to two stories, mid-rise being two to four stories, and located on collector arterial roadways, as identified in the city's metro thoroughfare plan. Again, looking to the land use plan, but specifically for the CUP guidance for schools, the land use plan says that buildings for schools should be compatible in scale, so height and bulk with surrounding buildings. Outdoor play areas should be located on the site so as to limit the noise impact on adjacent properties. The number of students should be evaluated to ensure the site is appropriately sized, and a maximum number is typically set as a condition of a CUP. And a site plan showing the location of buildings, as well as a queuing plan, are required to ensure all queuing, drop-off, and pickup takes place on-site. So here is the overall site plan that's proposed to be an exhibit of the ordinance. As you can see, it's an existing lower school, shown in gray. And then in this little excerpt, you can see that this is the approximately 11,000-square-foot addition to the west of that school. In addition to the expansion, there's also other work proposed with this scope. There's an extension of their existing detention facilities. This is currently a gravel access drive that's proposed to relocate the fire lane that's currently located here to serve the building, as well as expanding this loading zone. In addition to the overall site plan, the traffic circulation plan is proposed to be an exhibit. So this one here is the existing circulation plan. This was provided as an attachment of the staff report. So this shows the current queuing for the school. The directional traffic comes southbound on Gillingham Lane, turns right onto Lakeview, and enters the site, where parents are directed into two lanes, one for single riders and one for multi-riders, and with their designated pickup zone. In addition to that, you can see their current drop-off and pickup times. In the staff report, it was mentioned that the school is aware that there are current concerns with the traffic, while the TIA showed that the addition of the lower school would not increase or cause an adverse impact to existing traffic conditions, with the understanding that there was a need to improve current conditions. The school has updated their circulation plan, and that's been provided with a hard copy tonight. So a few of those changes included changing the dismissal and pickup times, so in order to reduce impact on the roadway network. They also considered removing these parking spaces, but instead have proposed adding no parking signs that would limit parking after 2:00 PM, so that for afternoon pickup, this becomes a fourth queuing lane, and it would be enforced with the signs in addition to a police officer. Let me get back a second. As you can see, there are two queuing lanes that split up in the current circulation plan, and this one, they have four. So parents enter in on this curb cut, and in the morning, they have three queuing lanes, and then afternoon, they would have this fourth one with this blocked-off parking. And you can see here that it reduces the impact on the roadway network with these proposed modifications. Here is a rendering of the proposed addition. This is not proposed to be an exhibit of the ordinance, but just to provide a visual for the addition. As you can see, it's one story, and it's to the west of the existing two-story lower school. Because this is a conditional use permit, the public hearing notification requirements have been met. Mailers were sent to property owners within 200 feet of the property. That was approximately 17 properties that didn't include state or city entities. The notification was also published in the paper and on the city's website, and then a courtesy sign was placed in front of the lower school along Lakeview Drive. Staff is not aware of any opposition, have not received any inquiries at this time. Just some initial points for consideration tonight. Again, it's just the public hearing, but for the discussion of the commission. Fort Bend Christian Academy is an existing school, so any condition should be reasonable for the proposed expansion of the school, is not the establishment of a school. The nearest single-family residential lot is across Eldridge Road to the west. The proposed scope of work is limited to the south campus, so the lower and middle school off of Lakeview Drive. Staff has reviewed the traffic impact analysis, which includes the proposed circulation plan that was handed out in a hard copy tonight, and recommended conditions of approval may be included in the commission's recommendation to city council to help mitigate any potential negative impacts. So staff's recommended conditions are that the site is developed in accordance with the attached overall site plan, and that the traffic flow and vehicular stacking must comply with the attached circulation plan. The drop-off and pickup times detailed on the traffic circulation plan must be maintained, and the school shall continue to contract with police officers to enforce those turn restrictions shown on the plan, and that the lower middle school has a maximum enrollment of 570 students. So next steps, after the staff presentation, the applicant has prepared a few slides, so they will speak for a little bit, and then after the presentation, staff is recommending that the commission holds a public hearing followed by discussion direction, and then we are anticipating consideration action will be held at the August 12th meeting. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening.
Just want to introduce you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jessica.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jim Brown, and I've got the honor of serving as President of the Board of Trustees for Fort Bend Christian Academy. I'd also tell you that I'm joined here tonight by our Head of School, Mr. Stephen Novotny, fellow board member Wade Hannigan, who chairs our construction efforts for the period of questions. What I wanted to do is take a little bit of time to provide context of why we are pursuing this addition. As Jessica indicated, this is an 11,000-square-foot annex to our lower school campus. It contains eight classrooms, as well as two administrative offices, one intended for an administrator, the second intended for a counselor. The intention of this annex is to host our seventh and our eighth grade students. Our goal is to improve student life. Since the building was occupied shortly after that 2001 approval, the second floor of our lower and middle school has been occupied by a combination of fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. So our goal is to separate those smaller middle-school-age kids from the larger, more mature, middle-aged kids, and to place them in a space that is more appropriate and more mature with landing areas that would help them in their transition to our upper school campus. Additionally, this works to decongest our second-floor hallways at class changes, and then finally, it does add to some operational efficiency. In our middle school, we do have roving teachers who do not have home classrooms, so with the addition of eight classrooms, we would be able to accommodate those teachers. Wanted to address enrollment, as we knew that that might be a concern, as it related specifically to our traffic. So per that 2001 CUP, our enrollment was capped at 675 students on this lower and middle school campus. This project does not contemplate or accommodate a major change in where our enrollment sits today. As Jessica mentioned, for the 24-25 year, we had 508 students across these grade levels on the lower and middle school campus. For the next school year, we anticipate that number to be 500. There are two tables below. The one on the left is the capacity that we operate under today. I would also use the term targeted enrollment. This is a product of our space, number of available classrooms, our teachers, as well as our desired student and faculty ratio. So you will see there our enrollment by grade, and the number of classes at the lower school level, enrollment at the middle school level. Today, our target enrollment, or our capacity, is 530 students. While we don't anticipate immediate growth with the opening of this middle school expansion, it would allow us to expand capacity slightly. As a board, from a strategic standpoint, we've set the objective that we would not want to grow beyond 75 students in each of those grade levels. That would move the capacity, or the targeted enrollment, of these grade levels from 530 to 570 students, which is complementary to the information that Jessica shared. Additionally, for our school, our board has determined that ideally, our total campus, including our upper school, will sit somewhere between 850 and probably 975 students. You may be familiar with TAPS. That's who governs our academic, as well as our athletic competitions. That's the group of schools that we participate with. We are a TAPS Division II school. That's the second-largest tiering of private schools in the state of Texas. That's the second-largest tiering of private schools in the state of Texas. To compare that to UIL, as an example, that would be like being a 5A school. We do not wish to elevate. We wish to maintain our peer group of schools like the Woodlands Christian, Cypress Christian, Lutheran South. We don't want to elevate into that size of a St. Pius or an Episcopal. We like the space that we occupy. We feel that it is incredibly beneficial to our culture and our mission as a covenantal school. So the TAPS enrollment ties to upper school, which we're not necessarily discussing here. But what I wanted to show is the targeted upper school enrollment tied into the lower and middle school enrollment to complement those enrollment numbers that I just shared. So last year, we had 372 students on our upper school campus. That was 22 students under that TAPS Division II threshold. This year, we anticipate 353 students. I felt like it was very important to give you some insight into our strategy as a board, that the intention here is not significant growth. It's really a cultural improvement for our school and really targeted toward student experience. Jessica highlighted the traffic impact study. We knew that there were probably concerns on our queuing, specifically as it related to Gillingham. So we wanted to come forward with solutions and show a commitment to actually ease the traffic queuing, most notably at pickup for our students. So as indicated, with even an increase, as we spoke of, the 530 to 570, it's not anticipated that traffic queuing will worsen, but we are committed to improving. That included the extension of our drop-off times in the morning, change in dismissal times, as are highlighted here in the blue on the right side of that table, creation of an additional queuing lane by restricting those Lakeview parking spaces, advancing our parking queue at the lower school, which would include additional pickup points and additional faculty, creating about 30% more efficiency. And then finally, we employ off-duty law enforcement for security and traffic control. Now, we feel that that's necessary to help us in this process, as well as a security deterrent, and we intend to continue to do that and use our off-duty officers in this process. With that, I just want to thank Jessica for her work with us over the last six months. She's been appropriately tough, definitely has the city's best interest in mind, but at the same time, has provided great coaching and counsel, and has really been a collaborative partner through this process. So with that, I'll conclude, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And with that, I'll let you guys open up for public hearing, and then staff and the applicant are available to answer any questions after.
Sounds like a plan. At this time, I will open the public hearing. We will receive in here all persons desiring to be heard on the proposed conditional use permit for the expansion of existing private school, elementary, middle, and high at 1201 Lakeview Drive and 1257th Street, further described as subdivision of 21.52 acres located in the Brown and Belknap League A15, City of Sugar Land, Fort Bend County, Texas. Do we have anyone signed up for public hearing?
No, Chair, we do not.
Would anyone who's not signed up like to speak? Come on down, and we'll just get you to fill out a form at some point. You've got it. Well, there you go. If you'll have that right over there.
Hi, good evening. My name is Mindy Stubbs, and I'm a counselor at the middle school. And I've been asked to represent our school from the perspective of counseling and the necessity that we feel for our school to expand living space for our students. But before I begin, I'd like to let you know that my husband and I are 28-year residents in Sugar Land. We both live and work here. We worship here. We've raised our children here. And in fact, my husband's family has been in the Sugar Land area for almost 100 years. So we've seen this city grow from a tiny, little rural town to the thriving city that it is, and it's thanks to you guys and the work that you've done and serving our city so well. So back to our committee, our small community. I'd like to give you a perspective of, say, a day in the life of our middle school. On one end of the hallway, you might see a cherubic, beautiful, little pony-tailed girl come in with matching backpacks, pencil bags, tennis shoes, bibbidi-boppin' up, looking very much for direction, for guidance from their teachers and their elders, looking very much for someone that they can follow. On the other end, we may find a 15-year-old boy that had to shave that morning in order to come to school. So we have quite the dichotomy going. They are not looking for that strict guidance. They're not looking for the adult in the room. They're looking for a way to grow, to figure out who they are, who they are apart from their parents, apart from their teachers. They're in that more abstract-thinking area of life. In our office, in our counselor's office, when we're serving children in the fifth and sixth grade, we may help them to solve their issues by appropriately guiding them through role-play, through playing games, through lunch bunches, but it's very much adult-centered guidance. They need that guidance from us. They're concrete thinkers. Our older kids are looking for grace and space, much different. When they come to our office, they're trying to figure out, what is it going to look like if my voice is different from my friends' voices? How am I going to navigate who I am outside of my parents? What is it going to look like if my voice is different from my friends? So very much developmentally different. So we see the necessity to be able to offer this space for these two different growths that's exhibited in our school. So we have been physically responsible. We have the monetary resources that we need, monetary resources that we need. We have the land space. We have support from our parents. So respectfully, we're asking for your support for us to serve our community.
Thank you very much. Anyone else for public comment? So I'm sorry, public hearing. Going once? Twice? Ah, see? The auction approach always works.
Good evening. My name is Shelley Pizzatola. I'm also a Sugar Land resident for many, many years, since I was a young girl. I am also a middle school counselor at Fort Bend Christian, and so I have very much similar things to say that Mindy Stubbs just said, but I'll just bullet point a few reasons why I think it's very important for specifically our fifth graders and our eighth graders to be separated. As she mentioned, we have fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders. They're passing each other in the hallways. And there are a few things, as you all know, fifth graders, they're basically still in late childhood, where our eighth graders are navigating their adolescence. And so my bullet points, for the reasons why it would be a blessing for them to be separated, would be, first of all, the learning styles. The fifth graders are still used to that elementary-style, structured classroom environment, you know, teachers holding their hands, showing them where to go, where our eighth graders do want that independence. And so that is one thing, the learning styles. Another is safety. We have amazing students at our school. So we don't have a lot of problems, a lot of discipline problems. However, fifth graders can be a little more susceptible to bullying and inappropriate behavior. Again, our students are amazing, so I'm not saying that they might, you know, say some bad language from time to time, but sometimes you're going to find that in the older kids. And so having those younger kids near those older kids isn't always the best thing when there's not, you know, maybe an adult standing right next to them, listening to every word. So that is another concern, or why I think that the fifth and the sixth grader should be separated from the seventh and eighth. Also socially, having separate areas for fifth and eighth graders allows for the creation of age-appropriate social groups and activities. So again, it eliminates some of that social pressure between those two ages. And I have lots of other bullet points, transition. Normally, a lot of middle schools, really the transition from elementary to middle school is sixth grade, and so right now, we do have those fifth graders, and they're, you know, they are a lot younger than the, you know, socially and emotionally younger than those sixth graders. So again, having those fifth graders separated would be amazing. Again, staffing, we spoke about that a little bit earlier. A lot of our teachers are having to share classrooms, and so that would allow for our teachers to have their own space, again, not to increase enrollment, but just for fifth and sixth graders to have their teachers in one spot, and our seventh and eighth graders to have their teachers in another spot. So any questions for me?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other one for public hearing?
There weren't any left, so I was just asking if I was allowed to speak.
Yes.
I'm Linda Wright.
We'll just ask you to fill out a form when you're done.
Absolutely, absolutely. I've lived in Sugar Land for 22 years with my family. My husband and I moved here to teach at Fort Bend Christian Academy, when it was Fort Bend Baptist Academy, and I've taught seventh and eighth grade at the school. I currently am seventh-grade English teacher. And I just want to speak to the fact that by having roving teachers, very few teachers have their own classroom space. And so, for example, in my seventh-grade classroom last year, there were two fifth-grade classes that came into my classroom during my planning periods, and there was no place for me to have a conference with parents, or to make a phone conference with parents that was private. And that is something that all of us teachers really prefer, is to have private conversations with parents, to have, if there are grade issues or behavior issues, which that's rarely the issue, but, you know, helping our kiddos to succeed and do well. And so that is the biggest issue for me, is that the sharing of classrooms is very difficult for all of us teachers. I not only teach seventh-grade English, I'm also the National Junior Honor Society advisor and the yearbook advisor, and there's no place for me to have those meetings because my room is being constantly used, and my lunch doesn't always fit with the other lunch that we have. So that is what I came to speak to, is the teacher aspect of needing a space that belongs to each teacher.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, at this time, I will close the public hearing, and we will proceed with review and discussion on the proposed conditional use permit. Commissioners, questions for Jessica? Comments on the proposal? It's, I'll just riff here for a second. There are so many times we don't do review and discussion, everyone probably is like, what do we do? We're just, as I understand it, Jessica, could you tell us what the purpose of review and discussion is?
We understood with the last application for a school, there were some concerns with this school's traffic. So that is why we recommended that tonight just be the public hearing and allow the commission to provide any direction with the proposed modifications to the school's circulation plan.
Thank you. I've got a few comments, but I would love to say, does anyone else have any comments or questions?
If you want to go first, I think.
Well, please proceed.
I don't, I think expansion of a school and the fact that there's a need for it is all good. The questions are around the traffic. And so if you can go back to your slide, where you showed two patterns, one was were existing, and the second is a proposed. Is this the existing one?
This is the proposed. This is the existing.
This is the existing. So what is the stack length on Gillingham at this point?
I will let our traffic engineering manager answer that.
Good evening, commissioners. Jason Vaughn, Traffic Engineering Manager for the Engineering Department. And the question's about the current stacking, in that the traffic consultant for the traffic study had measured overall stacking was 1,100 feet. South on Gillingham, there is a southbound right turn lane, about 370 feet, so they were exceeding that. I think they had around, I think the stacking on Gillingham right now is around 740 feet.
740?
740 feet, which the distance right now between Lakeview and 7th Street, that's the average. They went out for a week to, the traffic consultant, to observe all the traffic conditions, including the queuing on Gillingham. So the distance between, what they had in the report between Lakeview and 7th Street is 1,200 feet. So what they saw on average is the stacking on Gillingham was 740 feet. It could be a little bit longer, it could be a little bit less.
Then your dedicated right turn lane, how much is that?
The length, the storage length is 370 feet, so it goes past, currently it goes past the right turn lane.
Right, so that's a difference of just under 400, right? Does that have to use a calculator for that?
Yeah, let me see, got a calculator too, here too, so. Actually, it's half, 370 feet, so 370 foot of the...
365, right?
740 minus...
740 minus 375.
Oh, 370.
370, okay.
Which is actually 370.
So 370, okay. So it's stacking 100% more than what its capacity is right now.
That's, if you're asking about the existing stacking...
Yeah, existing.
100% more than the capacity, not following your question.
It's three.
Oh, I mean, past the capacity of the right turn lane.
Yes.
Yes.
I think I know the numbers. So when you do the proposed fourth lane, and you're going to not allow parking after 2:00 p.m. to alleviate that, right?
That is what the school has proposed.
That's what, yeah, I mean, that's the intent, right? Because there's no issue with the expansion, right? There's, I mean, I understand that there's a need for it, so I'm not even going there. I'm just talking about the traffic, that's it. So when you do the fourth lane, how much do you alleviate on Gillingham? What is your anticipated stack lane on Gillingham, based on your traffic study? And also the fact that, you know, the attendance will increase?
Well, consultant had the overall queuing, I'll work out the math here real quick. The consultant had the overall queuing at 1,100 feet, existing for 1,100 feet, with the two additional lanes, because there's the fourth lane, but they also converted, they had two pickup lanes in the original plan, which now reduced to one. So they now have, they went from two queuing lanes on-site to four queuing lanes. And that, so the overall queuing has reduced from 1,100 feet to 700 feet, a reduction of 400 feet on the street. What the consultant has estimated is going to be just a little bit past the right turn lane, in that, so 400 feet, 370, 30 feet past the right turn lane.
So it's just barely past the existing right turn dedicated lane?
Yes, ma'am.
By introducing this fourth lane and also reducing the queuing lane to just one pickup?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Okay, that was a question.
Other comments or questions?
Jessica, can you remind us about the CUP requires the commission to approve? This seems very straightforward.
Yes.
And so I guess my question is, is there, how come it's coming before us versus just staff approval?
It's a requirement for all schools in our non-residential districts, a CUP is required.
Set aside the fact that it's a school, just a CUP process, it requires our input?
Yes.
I'm just refreshing my own memory.
Yes, that's written out in the Development Code, that the commission has to review and recommend any conditions that they may feel necessary, and then final approval is from council.
Got it. My second question was, can you go back to your slide that has the conditions? It just strikes me, and you guys can tell me the reason for this, but it strikes me as odd to have a condition of approval of the site plan require ongoing contracts with police officers. That just seems odd to me. But can you just talk through the, I mean, I get the, intellectually, I get the rationale for, like, yes, there's always need to improve and revisit, and the circulation plans, I understand all that, but... But codifying it in a condition just seems odd to me. Can you, can you explain?
Yeah, so the intent of including that, being that specific in the condition, is to ensure that the traffic that was evaluated with the traffic impact analysis, which included those turn restrictions that are not by signage, they're enforced through those officers, is maintained.
I mean, it seems like, I don't have necessarily an issue with it being in there, just, again, it just strikes me as odd, but we can go with it. So that was just, those were my two questions.
I can extend on that if you don't mind. Sometimes with a site, when you have an extension or something based on the traffic condition or TI, you could actually enforce a traffic light also. So it's either you do dedication lane, which it already has, you can expand on it and do a traffic light.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Just a couple high-level comments from me. You know, to Vice Chairman Landine's point, well, first of all, it sounds like the school is willing to continue to contract with law, with police officers do that. I'm seeing some yeses. You know, to his point, you might consider whether or not you want to be that specific that it has to be a contract with police officers. I mean, I can envision situations where, you know, maybe you can't get one or whatever. So I don't know if you would consider language other than requiring a police officer to be present, or you all may tell me no. Someone that's out there in the street directing traffic has to be a police officer. I'd just say, think about that.
Is that the direction, to change the language to be more generic?
Well, I'm saying, think about.
Okay.
Whether, if you need a police officer out there, I'm seeing some yeses on that, so that's fine. If you need, if it needs to be a police officer because they're out in a public thoroughfare and directing traffic, okay, I get that now, makes sense to me. Look, beyond that, I just want to say, I was very impressed by the presentation materials. There were a couple things that really impressed me about this. First, I really appreciate the fact that the applicant is self-aware with respect to the existing traffic patterns and has come and proactively presented a potential solution to the problem. What I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that even though the, if this goes through, the projected increase in enrollment is like 62 students, and I'm hearing from the engineer that that's not even in and of itself significantly going to impact, it's not expected to significantly impact traffic. But beyond that, the school has recognized an existing problem or an existing issue and is already taking steps to address it. So I think that's great. I think it's fantastic, and I have no issues or concerns with this whatsoever as it's presented. That's my opinion. Any other comments? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Jessica.
Of course.
And thanks very much for the presentations of the applicants. If you'll give me just a second, we've a little more business to do, but thanks for everyone who spoke, and thank you for the members of the public who addressed in public hearing. We will move on to Item 7A, Planning and Zoning Commission liaison report. We will have to, we would have to retrieve Commissioner Brown in order to have that report, and I see him right on cue. He's more timely than I am. Welcome back, sir.
All of that to say, there is nothing on the agenda that night that was related to BMZ, but thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I was going to say, after that buildup, this better be the most exciting city...
There's nothing to it.
All right. 7B, City Staff Report. Anything from City Staff? City Staff Report. Are you drawing lots? Okay, casting lots, got it.
I am the short straw, literally. You will have a meeting on August 12th. That's going to be your next meeting. We anticipate that you're going to have a final plat at that meeting. You're also going to have a return for consideration and action for Fort Bend Christian Academy CUP that you just had discussion on, and we will be bringing back for consideration to you, the Logos Preparatory Academy Conditional Use Permit. We have had some significant change since the last time you saw that, and we would like to bring it back to you for consideration, for a recommendation before it goes to City Council and a public hearing.
Am I hearing that you're going to bring that back for review and discussion first?
We were going to do consideration and action, but if you would like a discussion and direction, we can do that.
You might consider that if the changes are significant.
Okay, thank you. Duly noted.
You're welcome. Thank you very much. Before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I will say, if you'll please let the Chair know when the plats are ready for, that we approved today are ready for signature, we will try to coordinate that as quickly as possible to take care of the applicant. And with that, I'll move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
I've got a second from Commissioner Landine. That motion passes. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, and good night.